Council work session order, it's 5:00 PM. Rick, go ahead with your announcement.
Community Development wanted me to let any of the attendees know that are tuned in right now for Milne Park that that discussion has been moved to an undetermined date. It was scheduled to be the Milne Park construction project was scheduled for a follow-up discussion with the council this week, but we moved it. We're still trying to generate more community feedback on that. We did send notice out to the interested parties that we were aware of, but there may be a couple of people that didn't get that notice. So I just wanted people to know that Milne Park has been postponed until a yet-to-be-determined future date.
All right, thanks. Planning Commission decisions for the first of the month. Anybody have any questions about anything that was decided or talked about?
I had a question.
Yeah.
About the proposed Stan Miller development on Stan Miller's property. Where does that stand? Did they submit an application?
No, I don't. They haven't done an application yet, so.
Any other questions on planning?
Well, they'll they'll come back. They'll come. What? How do? Where is that left? Will they come back to us?
Maybe.
We asked, I don't know if that was in the Housing Committee or not, but I I asked staff that question and they were unclear as well. I don't think Tom's really giving us any indication of his timing. I'm assuming he's crunching numbers and doing research and he hasn't indicated what his timing is to come back.
Okay.
Well, he's approved for 46. It's whether he wants to go for the whole enchilada.
Yeah, that'd be 23 restricted, you know, workforce housing restricted and 23 market. So if he, you know, if he doesn't feel like he got what he needed from us at the last meeting, he may just, you know, put in an application for that.
Yeah.
You know, we don't know, I don't think.
Now, if Begley's history is any indicator, he moves at a very measured pace. Tom doesn't do anything without understanding all the ramifications of what he's doing, so he does not rush. Mark, is that sound correct that the Braddock Flats, Stan Miller, there's been no word from them?
Yeah, that's correct, Eric. We're just waiting to see if he wants to respond and come back with something different.
All right. Carol? Any other questions on Planning Commission? Nope. All right, we move on to a huge legislative agenda. Tim?
Yes, our one piece of legislation is second reading of an ordinance to approve a lease with an affiliate of AT&amp;T for the installation of a small cell facility on Welcome Center building. There are no changes to the ordinance from first reading.
Questions? I said at the last meeting, I'll say it again, this is what we want. This is way better than putting a pole every 27 inches down Main Street with a with a tower on it. No, but for real, this is, we'd rather have this on on public and private buildings than than on separate poles through town. So I think this is a good, this is a good way to start setting some kind of not necessarily precedent, but some history for how we like stuff done. So everybody good with this one?
Yep.
All right. Very good. Public Projects update.
Hi. I don't have anything to add to the memo. I can take questions and Mark's here to take questions on fiber as well.
Hi, Mark.
Hello.
I went up to look at the rail. It looks great. Is that, you think it'll hold up?
Until tonight when someone slides into it with her truck.
Mayor and Council, I do have a on the fiber since the memo was prepared. Thirty-nine residential units since then and two business units. So our totals for residential are 136 for this year and 24 for business. And I'd like to point out that 33 of those units were our first multi-unit dwelling sign-ups. We had a condo complex sign-up, which represents 33 of those units. So we'd really like to mark it to that because we get our best bang for our buck.
Which project was that, Mark?
It's about Tanhauser 1.
Cool. Because I think their steer mark is also interested in talking about it. If you want to contact who's pretty tech savvy with that building, I'm happy to share that with you.
That'd be great.
You know, Mark, we really need to start pressing ALO to you know, that that premises pass number and our take rate. They need to be closer together. So, you know, at some point, I don't know how we can pressure them to really start, I don't know, getting out there a little bit more.
We certainly agree with you and Shannon Haynes and I have those discussions regularly. We hope to really push them here at the end of the season this year and then again next spring.
Excellent. Thanks, Mark. Other questions for Shannon and Mark on public projects or fiber 9600? Dennis? Carol, any questions?
No, good right now. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Jeffrey, are you just mumbling or do you want to talk?
Are you, is Darren controlling my mute? Shannon, are people pretty happy with this, with the fiber so far, the homes we connected?
I am.
Shannon, you're on mute.
Catchphrase for 20.
Yeah, we haven't had too many complaints. Every now and again, we hear somebody's got something that's a little slow and we direct them to ALO and haven't heard back from any folks. So, so far, so good.
Excellent. Other question? Jeffrey, you gonna sign up?
He already has.
Awesome. All right, let's go on to P and T update.
That's me again. I put an update on the wayfinding for the airport road lot. I think the big sign's going to make a big improvement for people to understand how to get there via coin. And then I also had the parking garage update in there if anyone had questions on either of those.
Okay, questions about signage or the structure? Shannon, is there, is there a pretty easy to access set of pretty pictures for people to find after the first part goes up and everybody freaks out that it's so big? Do we have a place we can direct them? Can we have an easy link off the front page of the website to get to what we're doing on the structure?
Yeah, I can get with Haley to do another post on that, Eric. No problem.
It'd be nice just to be able to direct them to a place. You know, it's such a big project. And once that precast starts going up, I think we're going to start hearing how we ruined everything for a while.
You're suggesting that they have a kind of a rendering that they can see what it will look like when we're finished?
Yes, because I think, listen, what I've heard from people is they've seen the one in Silverthorne.
Yeah.
Have said, are you going to do the same thing and just leave a concrete, which we're not, we're spending a lot of money to beautify it? People need to know that as the structure goes up, that's not the final version. That is the build, in-building version. So I want to make sure that people have easy access to that information, not, you know, multiple clicks to get to those pictures.
And Haley just posted a renderings that are beautiful, that they would be great to be easily found.
Right, right off the front page of the website, it'd be awesome. If we can do that, Haley, since you're listening. Other questions on P and T?
I know I sound a little bit like a broken record, but we have an idea of how we're doing as far as the capacity with buses. I know that we're only at 50% capacity now, but of that 50%, are we reaching the 50%? Are we a fraction of the 50%?
So where, oh, go ahead, James.
Yeah, I, yeah, we've been monitoring, certainly been monitoring the system all summer. And there have been occasions where we've actually been 50% on a regular basis. The drivers are instructed to follow the Summit County Public Health orders, so they're monitoring the capacity on the buses. Right now, the capacity limit is 25. So there are certainly times, as evidenced by as many people that have been in town, that we're reaching those numbers. But we're not surpassing those numbers. Now, has there ever been a case where there's been more than 25 on the bus? Probably a few cases, but the drivers are the ones that are monitoring that. They're also instructed if there are instances where there's more people that can fit on the bus, that the bus is instructed just to stay at the stop until we can get a supervisor there to either monitor or to alleviate the situation or roll another bus to pick up the people. But we're not leaving people, I guess we've left people behind a few times, but a lot of times people are okay with walking too.
And I assume that your monitor, as we go into the winter and perhaps there are more people using the buses, you'll let us know, right, when we're over a lot, like when we have to go back and pick people up?
Yeah, absolutely. Right now, our staffing plan and our, really our transit plan for the winter doesn't have a lot of additional people in it. We've kind of come in with a pretty pretty thin plan, one that can deliver all the service that we put as a proposal. So we may not have the option that we did this summer to roll a second bus or have a ghost bus available. But again, we're going to be monitoring the situation. Certainly if that becomes evident that we do need to add buses to the system, we'll certainly be bringing them back to council. We've also planned to have multiple buses on the yellow and on the brown, as we've had in pass. So there's 15-minute service during peak time on those buses. So we do have to leave people behind. They shouldn't have to wait more than 14 minutes to catch the next pass.
But, you know, and I spoke with Shannon about this today. You know, I definitely worry about this is going to go in the winter, especially on the yellow. And, you know, employees don't necessarily leave a lot of wiggle room to get to their jobs when they're on the yellow. If they get left behind for 15 minutes, you know, that's definitely a big deal. So we need to make sure there's enough information out there that people know to go to catch the bus earlier, that, you know, we do everything we can, that we aren't leaving people behind. Because the yellow also gets clogged up with skiers. You know, there's plenty of days, there's a ton of skiers on the yellow and people going to work. So it's going to be difficult this winter when more people, especially with South Gondola closed.
You know, Eric, one of the things, I think we need to talk about what this will look like, but, you know, we just within, you know, today, we received some great news that we're going to, Phase 2 on the CARES Act, we're going to get another half million dollars for transit funding. And so, you know, I think we need, that certainly helps us in running, you know, I think with some of those critical decisions we made, like the Upper Wars Mark Shuttle and and I certainly would want to sit down and talk to James about what that looks like from a budget perspective for us, but that, because we just found out about that. I mean, I just saw it minutes ago, so.
Awesome. Can the buses pull a trailer that we can put people in?
They probably could.
Give us funding to do a ghost bus, as James called it, just as a backup, you know, if that gave us some funding.
Well, and that's what I think we want to talk about. I want to see how that fits into the strategy and, you know, and then obviously we don't. But you gotta have somebody, you know, you're paying a driver to sit around and wait and see if you need it, but it might be some, you know, we need to be able to react quickly if if we find the need is greater than we anticipate.
In particular, the yellow.
Yeah, and I, just to remind everyone, as part of our winter service plan, we also added the Airport Road Express bus. So that's going to operate from 6:15 to 9:15 in the morning to service the airport lot road, and then it'll come back on at 2:15 to 5:15. So we'll have that additional parking area bus running as well. And then we also have the employee parking shuttle running 6:20 to 7:40 in the morning. So kind of those three, those three buses will kind of help distribute some of that ridership, or at least that's the plan and the goal.
Excellent. Hey, James, do we post on the outside of the buses what our capacity is?
Yes. In addition, we have it not only on the buses, but we have it at the bus stops. And then we also, for folks that visit our website, we actually have a COVID, you know, kind of a button right there that you can press to kind of drill into all our COVID protocol, including what the capacity of the limits are of the buses and then social distancing and masks and all that good stuff as well. And as I mentioned earlier, the drivers are the ones that monitor how many people get on the buses. And if there is a situation where there's more than 25 people that are on the bus, the drivers are instructed to stay at that stop until the supervisor can show up to take care of the issue or we can have somebody jump off so they can pick up the next bus. So that's how it's working right now, and that's the plan to go into the winter.
Thanks for that update. Any other questions?
P and T?
I do have a couple of parking, well, one parking thing for you and one informational. Normally, we are free in the parking lots for a month prior to the ski area opening. That's scheduled for November 13th. So what we wanted to check with you all is if you want to do free in the lots from October 13th to November 13th, like we normally would? Or if you would like to start free in the parking lots when we reopen Main Street, so say, you know, around October 1st and run through the opening of ski season.
How's everybody feel about that?
I prefer October 1st. I mean, just to keep the momentum going in town for that, that fall season.
Great.
I agree.
Everybody's good. We'll go with that.
Okay.
Thank you. And we're not anticipating any additional changes to parking for the winter season. With the exception, we may come back and ask about increasing the overnight parking rate. As you, some of you may recall, we kind of reverted back to our 2019 rates. But we're going to do a little evaluation and analysis of that overnight parking. We'll come back to you if we feel like we need to increase that. And then the last thing was Rick wanted me to mention, and Jesse is around to talk about disposable bags, so she can certainly answer questions about EV chargers. But one of the things we talked about today with Eric and we wanted to make sure you were all aware, our plan at this time is where there are EV chargers, say the parking structure as an example, and people are paying for parking, we're not charging them for the electricity to charge their vehicle. But then in, conversely, in other areas, like say in front of Town Hall, where there is, it's not paid parking, we are charging people for the electricity. So where parking is free, we are charging for electricity. Where parking is pay, we're not charging for electricity, just so everyone's aware of that plan. And there's Jesse, in case you have questions about the EV chargers.
Jesse, how much does it cost to charge a car?
A typical Level 2 charger, which is what we're installing right now at the rec center ice rink and replace the one at Town Hall. It will cost anywhere about 250 to 550. 550 is on the high end. Most of the time, drivers are not doing a full charge in four hours. They're typically topping off. And so 550 would be if they actually got lucky enough to fill their whole car on a four-hour charge. So that cost is about 20 cents a kilowatt hour. And that's a little bit more than the cost of a true kilowatt hour to us, the town, but that is in order to pay for operations, maintenance, and future installation of the EV chargers down the road.
So, hey, Rick, in our contract with the ski area for winter operations at the structure, where would that, does that fall into our the money we take off the top before the split?
The electricity?
Yes.
Well, we're split, but we're splitting the, we're splitting the electricity, Eric. So we're sharing in that based on our percentage.
Okay, that's, that's fine. You know, if we're giving, you know, potentially everybody that drives an electric car five bucks back on on what they're paying, I just want to know, you know.
Yeah. Well, I think we need to monitor that. I mean, you know, Jesse, Jesse did some research. I've asked a few people and generally, the, right now, the industry standard is not to double charge people. Don't charge them to park and then charge them to charge. But I, it does seem like we're giving away electricity in some places, certainly. So, yeah, I understand your concern. And the more we get, it could become costly. So.
At some point, when the majority of cars are electric.
And we're never, we don't have one of those level ones that will do a full charge in like 30 minutes, do we, Jesse?
Okay, other questions on parking and transit, Ben, with that, that information? Shannon, did you have anything else on the parking piece?
I did not. One completely unrelated thing that I'll bring up for you guys, there is a power outage right now, and I know French Creek is out of power. So hopefully Kelly and Dick aren't going to be impacted, but we'll, we'll keep an eye on you all. If you lose me and Rick.
And I'm part of the Highlands neighborhood. I'm Harry Gibson.
Flash away, we'll know why.
This is like a two-inch snowstorm and causes blackout. Doesn't even make any sense. All right.
Happens, can we call in from our cell phone and just being on the phone?
Yeah.
Okay.
Put up a picture of you. All right, anything else on P and T? How about housing and childcare?
Hello, hi. I did want to give you all a couple of updates on the monitoring process for this year, as well as just a quick review of the committee meeting today. So monitoring, as you know, the Summit Combined Housing Authority monitors the deed restricted units on behalf of the town. We started the monitoring, they started the monitoring September 1st. It'll run through mid-October. You know, already, we've got about a third of our units have responded. We are getting a lot of units that are being flagged by the Housing Authority because the the occupant is either working remotely or having some issues with employment. You know, working remotely is not a violation of most of our deed restrictions, as long as, you know, you know, it depends, but in general, that's not going to be a problem if you're working remotely. Unless you're working remotely for a business that is not in Summit County and you happen to have a deed restriction that requires it be a specific business that serves the community. But in general, remote's not going to be a problem. We may see some people furloughed. And we've already advised the Housing Authority that, you know, if they're furloughed due to COVID, you know, that's not going to be considered something we're going to pursue as a violation of their covenant at this point. But we'll know more middle October, once we get most of the respondents submitting their affidavits to the Housing Authority. The other thing that I wanted to give you a quick update on is the committee did meet today. And we talked about quite a few things, and I'm going to go through them, but you will receive your minutes in your next packet. But some of this was sort of time-sensitive, so I thought it would be helpful just to review it briefly. We talked about, we've been working on the Affordable Housing Guidelines, specifically on a maintenance incentive. We're trying to figure out how to incentivize the maintenance of deed restricted units with the appreciation being capped. There's no incentive, and sometimes it can be viewed as a disincentive for people to take care of their house because they're not getting the money back and the market is so, you know, there's so much market for those units. So we're worried about the condition of the inventory, and we've been working on a a plan that we think will provide owners with the option to be able to recoup some of their expense on true maintenance items. And we're going to present that to you at your next council meeting for you all to take a look at. But the committee was supportive today of that. We reviewed the Housing Helps program and still running like gangbusters on that. We talked about the buy-down program and specifically Cory is going to be helping with this business rental of buy-downs that you all brought up at your last meeting. We talked a little bit today about the parameters for that, like what types of businesses could apply, when would we start it? What would be the rental rates? And I think we got some good input today and we'll be creating a summary of the parameters of that program and presenting that to you at an upcoming meeting as well. We talked about ADUs in the Wellington and whether we wanted to move forward with some sort of incentive to to help owners recoup some of the expense of doing ADUs. And at this time, just given that the Wellington neighborhood was not designed to accommodate a lot of ADUs, and there's quite a few of them out there already without any incentive, we didn't feel like we needed to move forward with an incentive at this time for Wellington ADUs. The last thing that we talked about was Breck Studios, and I'm going to try to pull up a sketch if I can, and maybe you'll be able to see it. Let's see if that works. Can you all see that?
Yep.
Okay, good. Yay, you can see it. Actually, yeah, that's awesome. Well, you know, we went to Planning Commission on September 1st and got a lot of input from Planning Commission. We got some input from you. We got some input from ComDev staff. And we've made quite a few changes, and it's hard to see in the sketch, but we don't have the revised plans yet, but wanted to go through some of those changes with you all. Basically scaled down the project pretty considerably. As you recall, it was 18 units. Now we're down to 14 units. The buildings each lost, got much smaller. The buildings went from a building of 10 and a building of eight down to a building of eight and a building of six. So scaled down the size of the buildings. I think that helps to break the roof ridge, which was an area where we were getting gained negative points. We added laundry. We have put the storage on the side of the buildings. It will be inside interior storage instead of being storage sheds that were on the rear property line, and we were getting negative points for that. So I think we improved the storage, we improved the laundry, reduced the scale. And I think the storage on the side sort of helped step down the building as well. You know, we were receiving some negative points on the rear for just meeting, for missing the absolute or hitting the absolute setback, but missing the relative. And we're going to be able to set the building back a little bit, so we will meet the 15-foot relative setback. So no negative points there. Reinforced today that net zero is an absolute requirement. Talked about the rear wall to the trailer park that's behind, about how we can terrace that wall and provide landscaping on the terrace so that it's actually an attractive feature and buffing up the landscape on the rear side adjacent to that property line. We think we can also enclose the upper-level access to the units that are on top. Seven units are on the second floor. We think we can enclose that so that people aren't really sort of just out on their decks looking out over the trailer park. Talked a little bit about the ADU, making sure we include a type A, fully accessible, and making all the ground floor units type B, which is the visitable or adaptable standard. The committee today remained supportive, and the design team is, you know, working to incorporate these changes The committee today remained supportive, and the design team is, you know, working to incorporate these changes for the next semittel, and we just wanted to brief you in terms of the changes that we think are going to enhance the project. That's really, unless you have comments, that, that's sort of the summary of the committee meeting today.
Thanks, Lori.
I'd love to jump in as, as a committee member on this. You know, I'd like to start by, the staff has done some great work with that whole maintenance piece on the, on workforce housing, and it's huge. There's a lot of moving parts to it. It's complicated, and the staff did a great job of presenting something that I think is very workable that you'll see in a meeting or two. You know, this, this project, the Rec Center project, you know, I'm really pushing for a fundamental change in terms of the scheduling. I know it was presented to us by the developer with an extremely aggressive schedule. I don't want to see the schedule drive the project. I, I think it's very, very important. We, we really buttoned down all of the details of the project. We, we have them in writing on the plans in detail so that we understand them all, and we're all on the same page before we sign any contract. You know, I, I want, you know, Rick to feel comfortable when he's asked to, to sign something that, that it is after we have seen all the details of the project. If that slows it down, it slows it down. But I think that's just very important, and Lori went over a lot of the details, a couple additional that came up at, at planning last week, as well as we've all talked about. Dress up the exterior a little, maybe break up the roof line of the larger building, the eight-unit building, to I believe that's over 50 feet, so it will still get a negative point or two, a couple of negative points. So I'd like to, we asked, asked them today to, the developers, Dave and Melissa, were on the committee meeting with us. We've asked them to take a look at that roof line. The site plan, a lot more details, a site plan to start with, but with a lot of detail, with some, some topo information on it, so we can actually measure the height of the building and, and see where we land with code on that. You know, the stepping down, really, really being receptive to our neighbors to the north. You know, I know, you know, I wish these comments weren't so personal against our staff. I, I just find that inappropriate. But, you know, some of the comments are legitimate, and I want to be responsive to them. And, you know, and really, I, I think a lot of these details really do respond to them. I, you know, we really challenged Dave and Melissa today to, to really provide, you know, those, those homes behind us that, that are impacted by this, to, to give them a nice view. And I think breaking up the building, smaller scale, tiering of the wall and, and enhanced landscaping back there can really accomplish that, or help accomplish that. The 15-foot setback that, that Lori mentioned, I think is huge. That's come a long way from the initial plans. You know, I think the site plan's got to show the dumpster location and, and the parking detail, including an ADA parking spot for a van. You know, that, having at least one fully ADA unit is very important to me. Along with the net zero, I'd like to see specs on the windows, specs on the insulation, so we, we, you know, we're hearing from folks that, you know, have maybe been a part of previous projects, that really want to see us get the details nailed down prior to signing contracts, prior to pulling triggers. So we're not trying to react and negotiate on the fly where it's really all detailed in writing prior. I, I would personally like to see a EV, electric vehicle charging provision roughed in so that we have electrical service to the site along with, with conduit running out to, to where the charging station would be. I don't know that we, you know, since we are adding some charging stations to the Rec Center now, I don't know that they actually need to, to pull the wire and, and, and put in the station, but I think the provision needs to be done now. It's, it's far more expensive later. I think Lori hit on most, if it's stick-built, you know, we're trying to still understand whether they're going to stick-build it or do modular. I, I just, either way, we need to address the sound mitigation between units. I think it's been outlined with a fair amount of detail if it's modular, how there's multiple walls with, with sheet rock between, which I think the experts are comfortable will mitigate sound, but if it's stick-built, I'd like to, to understand the details on how they're going to mitigate sound between units if it is. And then any future renderings, we want to see the photovoltaic panels on the, on the roof so that we can, you know, be sure we like, like how they look, and so, you know, I, we, we asked them, they, they assured us they, they could accomplish all of these details in, you know, in writing in a plan form, you know, within a schedule that they're pushing for. I, you know, we'll see, but I, I, I feel these details are, are the most important piece to really get nailed down. Way more important than the schedule for the town's standpoint. This is, it's a new project for us, and we need to get it right. And I can't stress enough, you know, we're talking a lot about the building and the project. I want to touch on the people for a second. I, you know, I think we have a large group of workforce in town who are really outgrowing that party lifestyle of having many people crammed in units, and they're, they're really desperate to try to find an affordable place to live alone where they can, can enjoy a healthier lifestyle and not, not be in a crowded workforce housing unit that's, that tends to, to be a party unit. This, this really accomplishes that. So I, I, I think for that reason, you know, this really is, it's 14 units. It's a good start, and I think it's super important that we give it a go to, you know, to try to accommodate these, these, these critical workforce members. So there's my two cents.
Thanks, Dick. That was more like a quarter.
Well, sorry.
Jeffrey is the other member of the Housing Committee. Do you want to speak next?
You know, just, just, I, I do think the project should drive the schedule. I agree with everything that Dick was said, and then again, I think it's the old carpenter adage, measure twice and cut once. I'd like to get everything, everything determined before we sign anything on a signed bill contract. The only thing I would, I, I would probably be skeptical, not as, not a warm endorsement as the EV thing, I think we have. Depending on how much that costs, if we want to sub it in, that's fine, but depending on how much it costs, you know, we have, we have charging stations right at the Rec Center, but other than that, everything that Dick spoke for both of us, though a lot longer-winded than I would have.
Thanks, Jeffrey. Other comments?
I have a couple.
Yeah, please, Erin.
So, well, one of my questions was going to be about the soundproofing. Soundproofing, if, if you're not, I, I understand some of the comments that have come in. If you're in a unit that is noisy, or there's noise around you, it can be maddening. And I was going to ask you, Lori, to explain or to see how you felt about the soundproofing that was included in the packet. But if that's not ready yet, I, I completely understand. I just echo the sentiments of, of Dick that the soundproofing is very important, and I think we need to get that. We, we need to make sure that's solid, especially since we've had so many warnings about it, and it's on our radar. But since it sounds like we're going to get another crack at it, you'll be able to explain the soundproofing to me later. But, and the other thing was, I noticed from planning, all but one person made a comment about parking, that they didn't feel comfortable about it. Well, is that going to be talked about more?
I mean, we can certainly talk about it more. I, I think, you know, what we did is we talked with, with Scott and tried to, you know, figure out if, you know, the addition of, you know, these units and the additional spots that they're bringing, you know, I think there's a net impact of eight spots or something like that might, might change. But I think, you know, Scott was of the opinion that, that the shared parking would work since, you know, it's really only full on that part of the property during softball season. And even then, you know, there's spots elsewhere in the Rec Center parking lot that so, you know, and a big part of this, when we were looking at different properties, was the ability to do shared parking. Because, you know, parking and providing parking onsite is one of the things that really does seem to kill housing projects. And if you have an opportunity to do shared parking, it makes a lot of sense where it can work. So I think Scott believes it can work from the Rec Center's perspective, and, and we, we think it can work because it's worked in other communities. So, you know, we'll obviously see a final site plan. That's one of the things they're working on, is they're going to drill down. They're going to get everything to scale, and they're going to, going to figure out exactly how many additional parking spaces they'll be adding, recognizing it's 14 units. And, you know, again, as the sort of manager and owner of these units, we can encourage or discourage cars through our leasing rates. And, you know, we can put some, if we have town employees in there, you know, we can prioritize folks that don't have a car. I mean, the goal is, you don't have to have a car to live in this location.
Right, thank you.
Erin, I think a lot of the heartburn from the Planning Commission was around, there was just, there was, there was no site plan. They didn't see it any, they couldn't, you know, there wasn't a lot of detail around what they were going to do for parking.
Well, thank you, and thank you for all the updates. I, I think it's, this process is definitely improving this project.
Dennis?
Yeah, I'd like to, Dick, I thought you were eloquent. I didn't think you were all that long-winded, so I'm going to give you a kudos there. I like, I like all the changes that were made. I think they're very positive, especially for the neighbors. Lori, is it possible for us to see a CAD drawing of that north elevation? Of what that's going to look like from the perspective of the north? You know, especially changes that are proposed to be made to the upper story and the, and the outside entry?
Yep, we, we can have the design team do some sketch-ups of the elevations, and we can make sure we ask them to include a sketch-up from the, the north side looking south.
I, I'd love to see that as one, so thank you.
To really understand what you're going to be able to see, especially if we do some landscaping there, you know, it'll be interesting to see how visible the buildings really are, once you've had the terrace wall, and then you have some landscaping, and since you're looking up anyway. Yeah, we'll make sure we get one of them.
Well, that is included. I think that the, at the public viewing meeting, people have a better idea than what we're just talking about. So thank you.
Okay, Carol? Or do you want to wait?
No, I'm ready. I'm fully supportive of the concept of these micro-units. I think they fill a need in our community for the rentals for single person. Lori, I think you just addressed a lot of my concerns just with parking. I like that the revision has a fully ADA unit. I think that's very important, that we don't go with type A, we make it fully ADA. General design looks like there's a lot of improvements to. I guess my concern is just this aggressive timeline. And I think Dick addressed that, but what is our new timeline, and what is our commitment at this point, is my question.
Thanks, Carol. Lori, you want to answer that?
The way that we have it scheduled now, and I don't know that we will stick with this timeline. We had anticipated we would go to Planning Commission on October 6th. That gives the design team, you know, two or three weeks to really drill down and, and put, you know, pencil to paper and get everything measured out, get us scaled site plans, get us elevations. We'll have to see what they're able to produce in the next couple of weeks to know if we will keep that October 6th Planning Commission meeting, because, you know, I, I hear Dick loud and clear. We need to review this and take whatever time is necessary to fully vet it, so it's kind of a little bit in their court to see how fast they can respond to our, our revisions.
Along the lines of timeline is something we want to consider, just we're heading into a really uncertain winter. Is that something we want to take into consideration as we put our timeline together for this project?
You know, it's, it's an uncertain winter for sure, but we have, we have waitlists at every single rental apartment we manage. We have about 200, you know, apartments that we have some involvement in, and the waitlists are in the hundreds. There is such demand for rental units right now, and especially these units that we could price very, very well so that a person can get out of an uncrowded situation. We know we have a lot of employees living in overcrowded and cost-burdened households, so I think we feel comfortable that the demand is there for these 14 units, and they will get absorbed very quickly, either by individual employees or by master leases with employers. But we want to make sure we take our time to get the design right, because, you know, this, this could be a model for housing that we build elsewhere too. So I think we want to get the details right, so the project will drive the schedule, and we'll take our time with it.
Also important to note, Carol, that the money that would be used to build these is not money that we could use anywhere else. This is money that's dedicated in the housing fund for this purpose, and we can't use it to help cover the cost of a bus or any other type of operational expenses, so.
Okay, and then I might have been a one-off ask you this, Rick, but do we have any existing master leases? With businesses?
I don't think so, no, no. No, probably the closest thing we did to that was we jointly built what we call Coto Flats, which is County Town owned, where we paid for half and they paid for half to, to house employees in, but no, we haven't done master leasing yet. We did something with CMC early on for a while, but then we sold them the buildings, so we have, you know, dabbled in it, yeah. You know, I just want to add, as someone who has managed parking in the town of Breckenridge for 20 years very closely, parking is the least of my concerns with this project. Absolutely the least of my concerns. We shouldn't worry about parking at all. We are so adept at, in our permit program and issuing permit to the residents and their ability to keep a car in that, in that lot. There's plenty of parking. I, I think it's a, it's a perfect model for shared parking, and I am not the least bit concerned about parking, or the lack of parking in that area, so.
Thanks, Rick. Kelly?
Thank you, guys, for all the work. I feel like, like the others on council, it seems like you've addressed really all of, any of my concerns. I would, I do look forward to seeing how we can put these leases together so that they can really, you know, there are a lot of people who would benefit from having rental housing in this price range. But what I'd really like to see with only 14 units, I'd really, really like to see it go to some critical employees. So, you know, if there's any way we can just continue this discussion, make sure that we get all of that kind of planning together during the same time period so that, so that we can do something in a legal and, and meaningful way.
Yes, absolutely.
Let me be the unpopular one. I don't, I'm not a fan. Right now, with the changes that have been made, I'm not a fan of the project. I don't think it belongs here. If I was sitting on Planning Commission like I did for a long time, this is the kind of project that my first comment out of my mouth would be, "Too much program for the site." And that, that's, I feel like we're, we're, we're trying to shoehorn this in. And let me first start by saying, I don't appreciate the way the neighbors, some of the comments the neighbors have made. That's not how we do business in town. That some of the comments were just so, just wrong, and honestly offensive to the staff, and offensive to, to Dick and to, to others on the council. So I don't, I don't appreciate- So I don't, I don't appreciate that, but I have to put that aside and look at what we're trying to accomplish. I don't think this is the property to accomplish this. I think we have plenty of other properties in town where we can do our first micro unit property. And then one day if we decide that, that's a successful model, now we see how it works, we could come back and do something here. But I'm, I would be a no vote if we were voting on this today to go any farther. I would just say, I, I don't, I don't like the impact it's going to have to the rec center to pull in, to pull out, which is all already a cluster. So that's, I mean, in general, that's where I am. The second piece for me is, I don't want to build anything right now. I'm terribly frightened of what's going to happen this winter, I won't lie to you. I, I've said it before, but I'm afraid of where we're going to, going to be in three or four months. With this ongoing pandemic and businesses that are going to be going out of business and what it's going to do to the housing market. While we may have a list now, I wouldn't put money on there being a list in February of this year. So I'm outvoted and that's fine, but I don't. I, I am not a fan of this currently and the fact that we keep pulling units off. Honestly just says to me that we're just trying to do too much here. We shouldn't, if, if we're trying to get somewhere, we're, we're getting a bunch of units quickly. We shouldn't be taking units away to, to, to do this project. What we should be doing is finding a piece of property where we can actually be putting more units on, so. That's it, I've talked to Rick about this extensively, he knows how I feel about it and I, I've chatted with Dick. I would, I would torpedo this thing right now and try to find a, a better property and, and think about this more. And not build anything starting this November, so.
Eric, what other properties in town would you consider?
Well, I think we have all kinds of properties. We have the, we have property over in. The town storage facility where we, where we have the impound lot. We have, you know, we have property on block 11. I mean, we have property, we have other property, we have property behind Public Works, although Rick doesn't like that. Because that would, that would really just be for employees. But I'd be okay, you know, we had talked about doing eight micro units for employees a couple of years ago behind Public Works where the, that graveyard is. I know James has another name for it, but I, I am not comfortable with this at all. And just so you know, it's not because of the neighbors, although I, like Dick, I do, there were some valid comments in some of those letters. I don't, I don't have a great feeling about this.
So unless we have, unless we have somebody else or we have a majority of you that want to change directions. This is, you know, now would be the time.
So I'm really, like, I'm excited about this project and I want to see it, but I really, really wanted to see it successful. So Lori, is there a way that we could sort of evaluate or see an evaluation of some of the properties? That this could go well on, you know, that have existing parking, that have a lot of walkability? That would provide some of the same amenities or have you already done that? And you can just tell us right now that this is so far in a way the best one that.
We, we did a quick look at some remnant parcels. You know, when we started talking about this a couple of months ago. You know, the direction that we were going is try to find a small. Piece of property for a small project. And then if it became, you know, then we could scale it and do different versions of this at different levels on different pieces of property. So one of, from the get go, it was sort of a, a small parcel where we could do a limited number of units. Not to go out and do 50 units. So, and then the other thing was just really, you know, this, this site kind of rose to the top. Because we had, for probably at least a year, we've been looking at this parcel as a potential site for residential development. And I have a, a plan that was done in-house a year ago that showed four townhomes there. So basically, you know, kind of taking up the same amount of land, similar to the townhomes that are immediately to the east. Just that same kind of development or to the west, but that same kind of model of development. And then, you know, when this opportunity came up, it was like, well, maybe we could try a different housing type. And since we'd already looked at that site for housing and there's housing around it and all the amenities that are there, the bus stops there. It, it rose to the top because it was already sort of in a community area where there was already some housing, so it fit in. I mean, we looked at, you know, there's a little track near Main Street Station that used to be right away. But it, the right away got vacated and then it was a strip of land. They ended up putting some trees and open space on it. So that could have been a parcel, but then we'd be, you know, taking away open space. We looked at the rodeo grounds and yeah, that could potentially work, but probably not. You know, if we were going to do a larger scale project, it might work on the east end of the rodeo grounds. But then you've got sort of wetlands then there and, you know, who knows what issues. We looked at Schoonover, which is going to get scraped at some point, we're going to lose basically units that are very similar to these units. So we thought, oh, Schoonover would be a good site, but that's just not ready and won't be ready for years, so.
Plus, we think Schoonover served better as a, as an entryway into downtown.
Yeah.
We don't want to, we don't, I mean, we're trying to open that up, we're not trying to rebuild on that parcel.
Right.
Lori, if, in a perfect, I mean, with all these revisions and, and kind of reconfiguration. Of what we've been talking about, realistically, this project won't. It probably would not be started this fall.
It's a lot of it's going to depend on how long it takes the design team to turn it around and get us some revisions and let us take a look at them. But yeah, it is definitely getting tight. We knew the schedule was super tight to begin with, and now that we're requesting some revisions. I can't say yes or no whether it would, is still viable to consider it going out of the ground this fall.
I mean, Dennis, no, people build all winter, they build in the winter up here all the time, so.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, well Lori, you know what to do next, I mean, you got comments from.
I, I, you know, I need to make sure I understand council's expectations moving forward and what you plan to see. I mean, typically on this, we, you know, this is a. I mean, I would be entering into the contract, but. It almost sounds like you guys want to see the contract before we sign it. I don't know if you're going to be looking at drawings every step along the way. Or you're just going to, you know, approve it as part of the planning commission, like you approve everything. And, and hope that the housing committee is hitting, you know, the deal points that you think are important. So from, you know, from our perspective, how much we're bringing and sharing with the full council versus the housing committee. It's kind of important to, to understand here.
Thoughts, anyone?
Well, I, I want to make, I want to make sure we, I want to make sure we figure out the livability of it as far as the sound. I, I, I think there was, we got a couple of letters about another project that's similar over in Frisco that has a little bit of a. Has some sound issues, I want to figure that out. I'd like to take a look at the, the, the different roof scape and, and so, yeah. I, and again, I measure twice and cut once. I'd like to have everything set in stone. And like Dick said, I'm in no hurry on this thing. I'd rather, I'd rather get it right than rush into it on, you know, on anyone's timeline other than our own. Which, which kind of would guarantee that we get a project that we, we like and we're proud of and it's a good bang for the buck. And Rick, I think direction, what I'm hearing from council and what I heard in, in. Housing committee today is, you know, let's hold off on the contract and signing a contract until we actually see the site plan, see the drawing. See, I mean, you know, we see the sketch with hand drawn stuff on it, you know, that, that's not, we're not there yet. So I, I don't know if the whole council, I, you know, I. Wants to weigh in on this, it's, you know, it's, we, we certainly approve much bigger projects than this just through planning. But, you know, certainly want to get the plans and get the details before we enter into contract.
The, the difference between what goes through planning is that's privately done on private land compared to. This is a, for all intents and purposes, this is a town project. So I, I think it is legit, council will want to see as many steps as possible. You know, you wouldn't, you wouldn't ask a private developer to give you their plans other than what you get to see at planning commission because they have development rights. This is a private developer building something for us, he has no development rights here, we do. So I think if the council wants to see a bunch of steps, I think that's completely legit. Knowing that that will completely slow this down and potentially kill the project. Because, you know, David, when, if you remember, when he came to us, a big part of this for him was start in November. Because he's got a gap in time, so. You know, I mean, I guess we'll see what he says, but that was a big piece of this when he came to us, we can get this done pretty quickly, I got some time between projects.
Well, that's fine, I mean, if he's not, I mean, I was under the impression also that this is kind of a pride project for them as well. So if he's not invested at that level, then. I mean, we need to know that upfront too. So I think it's all the more reason to say this is what we need and if you can't provide it. We'll find someone else to provide it or we'll do the project at another time. But I'm very committed, I like this project and I think that the 14 units is, to me, it's a benefit to the overall project. Not that we're ripping off unit by unit because we can't jam it in there. I think some great points have been made from either the public or people on council. And I think that the planning team has done a really good job executing what I think could be a exciting project.
Fair enough, other comments?
Yeah, I agree with that. I think, and again, I, I think that we'll, we'll get there, we'll get to a better project because of this whole process. And, but I, I agree with what's been said, I'd like to see more details. I'd like to, again, fully understand the soundproofing, fully understand the, the parking and, and all of those details that we, that we don't have yet. But I think it's, it's an evolution, it's an evolution because it's something new and different that we're doing. But I think being located near the grocery store is, is important for the ability to not have a car. Which I think we're trying to test out if we can create something that is micro where you can walk everywhere. Which I think is, it's great and it's, it's in line with what we look for in our Breckenridge goals.
Other comments, final comments, anyone? Okay, thanks Lori.
Thank you.
Anything else from housing and childcare, any childcare update? All right. Okay, committee reports.
There was just a couple of small committee reports in your packet, the police advisory and transit. So unless you have questions, we'll move on to the events committee.
Questions? No, all right, events?
Mayor and council, you have the minutes from the meeting last week in the packet. There was nothing overly notable that came out of that meeting. Kelly and Dick, I don't know if you wanted to bring up the employee appreciation potential event that we discussed on Friday. Or if you'd like me to cover it, I can.
Kelly, you want that one?
No, I, I'm sort of a bystander in this, so I think Dick or Shannon, take it away.
You know, we, we, we were betting the, an idea of recognizing our frontline staff. And, you know, it's been a stressful summer for our frontline staff and trying to do. A, a townwide appreciation event for, for that staff. Which, which, you know, I'm, I'm very supportive of. I, you know, we talked about utilizing Main Street and, you know, maybe the day after. You know, we were closing Main Street and trying to keep it open one more day and, and. You know, doing some food and, you know, putting together a little budget and just, just have a, an event. I, I've heard some concern around. It's going to turn into a huge party and be in the Oktoberfest that everybody's yearning to have right now. You know, and that it would be better as a breakfast. You know, I, I, yeah, I mean, that's something that we certainly can talk about. But I think the concept of a, you know, of a, of a town appreciation event is, is, is a good concept. And I think details, I think Lucy and her team are working on some details to, to, to vet further. Shannon, there anything to add to that?
Um, no, well, I guess yes, just a little bit. We're, well, obviously we'll work out a budget and I've spoke to Rick. And we think depending on what that looks like, that, you know, we could find some money in the budget to do that. BTO has some ideas on how we could help fund an event like that as well. And we are planning to bring it to the resiliency committee tomorrow to just kind of toss it around and think it over. Casey Willis from the BTO has done some legwork on it already. So we're, you know, we're working through the details, but we just wanted to mention it to you. So that you are aware that this was something we were considering and that there was a possibility if it worked out. That we might ask to keep the road closed for one more day.
I like to bring this idea, Dick.
Yeah, who are you including in frontline staff?
Great question, Erin, we had some discussion around that. We, we were, it started with, with retail and restaurant and then we expanded to first responders and to, to medical staff. And, and certainly daycare, teachers, you know, you know, it, it's kind of yet to be seen. And some of that will be driven by budget, what are the numbers, trying to get our head around, how much can we afford to do? How much do we want to afford to do? So I, I think that's still a work in progress, but we have had discussion around that issue, who to include.
I'd just like to, I'd like to remind, remind us all, city market, post office as well.
Well, and perhaps a way to take the celebration to some of these groups too. You know, I think if we have all of those groups together, we could, we could cause an issue. But, you know, maybe there's a way of thinking about, you know, remote celebrations somehow.
We, we talked some, talked some about that as well as, as, you know, possible, you know, maybe certificates to coffee shops or, or whatever. So, yeah, I mean, great point and, and, and I think that's being vetted. I think that's certainly on Lucy and her team's radar as, as, as this thing comes together.
Awesome, great.
I, I mean, just to give you an idea of magnitude, you know, if you're, if you're going to try to serve 4,000 employees at $15 a person. There's, you know, you're hit $60,000 on that, and so how's that get divided up or, you know, that type of thing is what they're looking at.
Other questions or comments? I think it's great, great if we could figure something out, even if it, Dick, in the end, even if it just came down to $10 gift cards all over town. So that, you know, restaurant community could be supported too, in a, you know, sort of a different way, so.
I was going to say some sort of like a gift basket with, with various entities putting something in. So, yeah, I think that's, having one location I think could be a bit unwieldy for, for everybody. And also a Petri dish of COVID.
But all 4,000 people in the Riverwalk?
Yeah, I'd be like Sturgis.
So we did talk about both sides of this, we talked about the gift cards and the, you know, Main Street closure. And one of the things that Lucy brought up, which I thought is a great point, but I also think it, it represents or presents some of the difficulties. Is that, you know, it's kind of a cool idea to see that the, the frontline staff is being supported. By the management that they're working with or by the town people, you know? And so I think that there was sort of, the idea of the presentation was kind of important to Lucy. And I think that's one way we ended up sticking with the Main Street closure and. But even knowing that we'll have to spread people out for sure. But I mean, part of my. Um, but I mean, part of my issue is that if you do, really, no matter when you are doing this. There are going to be, be frontline people working who can't attend, right? And so that's why we thought, well, maybe it'll be sort of a combination. Like you can get a ticket to come in and get a meal at a certain time. And if you don't use it for that, then maybe you can redeem it for a coffee voucher or for us, something else. So Lucy had a lot of great ideas, but I just wanted to throw that out there if anybody had an opinion they wanted to talk about on that.
Just shut town, town down for Monday. Let everybody stay home and have a day off. All right, we're behind schedule. We need to catch up a little bit. Everybody good on this? I want to move on to the plastic bags because I know this is going to be a discussion also. Jesse?
Great. Well, thank you, Mayor, Council. Um, for those of you fairly new to the council. Um, Breckenridge enacted a disposable bag ordinance, um, back in 2013, which created a 10 cent fee for disposable plastic and paper bags. In order to discourage its use, it was one of the first, um, major, you know, action steps that came out of the sustainable BREP plan. Um, which was adopted by the council in 2011. Um, since that time, staff tracks the amount of fees, um, that's remitted to the town based on, on the disposable bag use. And during the first couple of years, we really saw a dramatic decrease in the amount of bags that were being used. Um, but then we started tracking it, uh, against sales tax revenue because sales tax was increasing so high. We wanted to understand bag use in relationship to that sales tax growth. Um, and so we continue to see that use. Um, it, it does, it has increased a little bit over the last couple of years, but not nearly to the extent that sales tax has. Um, but having said that, last year we, we still, um, gave out over a million bags. And that was the type of bag that we actually have a fee on, not to mention the bags for the hundred plus retailers that are exempt that I mentioned in the memo. And so, um, and then to top it all off during COVID, um, council gave direction to the town manager to suspend that fee. Um, to allow people both, you know, um, to make sure that we weren't spreading COVID through reusable bag use. Um, but also to give people that relief. And so, um, what we're coming back to you with today is kind of a, an analysis of the program, but then also comparisons to other. Um, similar ordinances and we're asking for direction on a couple of different things. Um, the first is whether or not council wants to reinstate the program, um, based on the, the COVID suspension, if you will. And then the second question to that piece is whether or not, um, council would like to, um. In, increase the fee so that we are having a bigger impact on actually reducing the disposable bags. Um, we've seen with mature bag programs that fees that don't adjust to the cost of living or inflation. That people are, are somehow able to kind of absorb that fee and then it, and then they, it doesn't have the impact that we want it to have anymore. Um, and, and again, the fee goes to plastic and paper bags. Um, and so then there's a question also, are not we want to pursue, um, a total ban on either of those two products? Particularly the plastic. Um, so that's kind of the first part of the question. Um, the, the second section refers to recycled content. So of the bags that we do give out, even though we charge 10 cents for them, um. Many of them are still, there's no requirements around having recycled content and recycled content. Um, requirements help drive recycling markets. It helps remanufacturers collect material. It helps, um, keep the prices down for, for post-consumer recycled content. And, and all it just helps drive the market. And so, um, not to mention it reduces the overall life cycle of creating a virgin, um, paper or plastic bag. And so typically in the industry, um, or not the industry, I should say typically across ordinances of this kind. There's a 40% consumer, uh, recycle content requirement, uh, for paper bags. And so that means 40% is coming from other paper that has been recycled. Um, the only ordinance that I was able to find related to plastic recycled content is in California. And they also have a 40% post-consumer waste requirement for plastic bags. Um, so at this time, uh, I'm not recommending that, um, that we, that we look at plastic in this context. Because I'm not sure that there's enough availability out there for us. Um, but certainly paper bags are, are widely available, um, at that 40% post-consumer recycled content level. And in your memo, I've provided some examples. Um, it's, we cost averaged across a couple of different, um, bag producers and manufacturers. So you can see a price detail there that gives you a range of what you could get, um, you know, quantities of 500 for different types of bags. The, the 100% recycled is a little bit trickier because not. I, we weren't finding that 100% post-consumer recycled material, um, was widely available. And so the difference is they're saying it's 100% recycled. Um, but that 60% difference is coming from, you know, potentially industrial recycling. Become from other types of material. Um, it's, it's not 100% recycled paper from like our office. Um, and so we really think that the 40% post-consumer recycle is, is kind of a sweet spot where there's enough availability. The price is competitive, um, and it's widely available in a, in a variety of different, uh, bag types. So those are the first two. Um, and, and Mr. Mayor, stop me if you want to discuss each one at a time. Or otherwise I'll go through all four sections and we can come back with specific questions.
Funny, I was just thinking that this might be a, a lot to chew on. Let's, let's, let's start with the first piece. Who wants to reinstate the disposable bag fee right now? I mean, honestly, the real reason we did it was because things were going off the rails and we thought. Some other towns were doing this. So hands up, Dick, yes. Kelly, Carol, Erin?
Also, as a side note, at the grocery store, if you check out yourself, you know, the self-checkout, they're still charging 10 cents for a bag.
Uh, are they remitting that 10 cent, Jesse?
Uh, that's a good question. I, I am not sure. We'd have to talk to the finance folks.
We're getting it.
Or Tim, I'm not even sure if they're allowed to remit that during the suspension. I'm not sure how that works.
Uh, Rick said we're getting it. So Dennis, what were your, what do you feel? Yes or no? Your yes. Okay. I'm the only no again. That's great. All right. I just, I'm not, I'm not ready to change anything going into the winter, but good deal. So we will, we will reinstate the bag fee.
I do have a question. So currently at the grocery store, they won't, if you bring your own bags. People won't bag your groceries for you. Is there anything to that that would make us worry about this at all? I mean, I, I don't have a problem bagging my own groceries. We bring in our own bags.
I, I think the science is showing that there's no.
That there's, but I, I don't think that the grocery stores will bag, bag your groceries if you bring in your own bags. Science or no science, they won't. I, I think it's a city market policy right now.
I didn't know city market was even bagging people's bags for the last five years.
That's a good point too. Okay. Just wanted to add that to the conversation.
Okay, Jesse, that's, yeah.
Jesse, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Jeffrey.
I, I have a, a question before we go on any further. And I tried to call you today to ask this and truck you as well. Is there any validity in, in the, uh, the accusation? That the multi-use bags are more, as environmentally impactful in a negative way than, uh, than plastic and paper? In other words, it just takes as much energy there, there, uh, yeah, takes as much energy in, in plastic to, to create. And, uh, and they have to be reused, you know, a thousand times to make it a wash.
So, um, there's always pros and cons to all these decisions. And the bags that we, that we order, we spec out to be 80% risk, post-recycle, post-consumer recycled content. So we're actually getting, we're getting better recyclability out of our bags than even what I'm proposing to you in terms of the paper. Um, they are not made in the USA. And so there are, you know, there is a carbon impact of getting those bags. Um, sure. When we originally designed the bags years ago, um, I think Mark Truckee likes to tell the story. Somebody was trying to make a point and put a, um, code books in the bag and it like ripped the handle off the bag.
Very clever.
They went back and wanted to make sure that, you know, the bag was very, very durable. Um, and so that those durable materials, you know, there's an impact to those. Um, having said all of that, I also don't think that the bags that we are using today. Because they're not made from virgin material, they are, they are, and I don't have a specific number to give you like 50% better. But they are better than if you were to produce a single-use plastic bag from virgin material. Um, can we look at other options? Yes. One of the things that people point to a lot is let's make these out of canvas or cotton, organic cotton for that. There's a lot of evidence out there that, um, that, that cotton and other fibers. Now, now hemp might be a different story. Um, but that cotton is almost just as intensive as, as your other materials. Um, you know, the paper pulp is very energy and water intensive, fossil fuels is very intensive. So is cotton. So. We do evaluate this every time we do make an order. I make sure that we spec it to have recycled content. But it, it's kind of a values call, you know? Do we want to source these things at, at three or $4 each instead of a dollar? And have them made in the USA by hemp farmers in Montana? We could have that conversation, but the, the cost drives some of this as well. And to your point about durability, most of these, um, reusable bags need to be about 100 times, um, for them to really get that, that value.
I don't think that's a ton, any, either Jeffrey. I mean, 100.
No.
You know, this.
I like the post-consumer recycled materials. I, we've got to drive the markets. I mean, the, the, the markets are not super strong for a lot of these materials to be recycled. And I, I, anywhere we can help drive those markets is, is good in my mind.
Okay. Second question, uh, increase the fee, um, for plastic and/or paper and/or ban plastic bags. I never do this, but I'm going to go first. Here's a reason I don't like the fee. I don't think the fee does anything. I, I think the fee, I, I haven't liked it from the beginning. I think it's, do we want plastic bags or not? I say we ban them. I say beginning in, pick a date, July of 2021, July of 20, you know, whatever. July of 2021 or the end of summer 2021, we ban plastic bags, period, end of story. There is no fee. Everybody moves to post-consumer recyclable 40% paper bags, end of story. This collecting fee thing, while I know we have some money to do some good stuff with it, I just don't like it. I, I really do not like this nickel and diming the guest thing. And it doesn't work for the restaurant community. You know, I know that's, that's down the line here, but you cannot ask somebody for a dime when they're on their way out of the door. And they turn and say, can I have a bag? It just, you'll never get the restaurant community to be able to even adopt a bag fee. Unless you allow the restaurants to just pay it themselves, which was contrary to the reason for this. So I'd rather just move to a ban and not, not do the fee, move to a ban, give everybody six, eight months to get rid of their stock. And then move on, period. So.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, of course.
Jesse, is that true that the, uh, fee doesn't do anything?
Um, well, our, no, I mean, our evidence showed that it dramatically reduced the amount of, of bags that people were using out of the gate. But as the, as the bag program has matured, it, it has had less of an impact over time.
I think you're better just banning it. I mean, what, you know.
Oh, no. I'm, I'm on board with the banning plastic. Banning plastic is a no-brainer to me. And so that's not part of the, my question. My question is, should we increase the paper, um, ban? Either keep it at 10 cents or increase it to 25 cents?
I don't like it personally, even for, if you're having people buy recycled bags to give their customers. I don't like a charge. I think a fee pisses people off. And I, I would, I would argue that potentially a bunch of the, the, with the movement that you saw originally was just locals. And people that live in the area that always carry their bags with them. You go onto city market, there is no difference in the number of people that are visiting for a week. In the amount of paper, plastic bags they have and the amount of bottled water that they're carrying out. So I don't know that we've impacted our guests as much as retrained the people that live in Colorado. You know, not just us, obviously, but you know, every, every ski town that's done this Denver, you know, Boulder. So. Jeffrey?
I would, uh, I agree with you. I would, I would, uh, give a grace period and ban all plastic bags. Um, I do think, uh, I, I, I do, and I think the 40% uh, recycled paper is, is a, is a reasonable ask. But, uh, I, you know, but I also, I also would continue the fee. I don't know if I'd, I, I don't know if I'd up it to, uh, uh, 25 cents. But I'd, I'd continue the fee at, 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 uh, a dime.
Kelly?
Yep, I agree. Ban plastics. I'm, I'm thinking the end of next summer. I'd like to give everybody plenty of a chance to get, um, rid of the bags they have. And also hopefully be through COVID. Um, so end of next summer. And then I would like, um, the 40% and the 10 cent fee.
Carol?
Um, I agree with that with Kelly. Um, banning plastic on this, um, maybe enacting it less next summer. Where we don't burden any small businesses with this additional change rate. Um, and, um, keeping a fee for paper bags. Um, question on our existing fee, um, how much do we generate through that annually about?
Um, it's anywhere from 40 to 60 K a year, I believe. Thank you. Depending on how many people are late in, in remitting their fees.
Dennis, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I'm in agreement with Eric. I'd like to ban plastic the time. Don't need to reiterate that. And I don't like the fee. I don't like charging people for bags. It just, it seems petty. Never liked it since the day it started.
All right. Thanks, Dennis. Erin?
I'm in for the ban. Um, yeah, and all, all bags. Um, especially the thick, the thick plastic bags like that loophole. I never, I think it's worse. Um, but yes, I, and I agree, um, after COVID. And I don't want to up anything. I don't want to up the charge, the fee during COVID either. Um, so yeah, so ban after COVID.
All right, Dennis and Erin, are you both good with 40% post-consumer recyclable paper?
Yes.
Forty without a fee, 40%. See, I, my, my issue is then are we still encouraging a bag culture? Is it just, I?
It's a good question.
I defer, I defer to the group. I, I kind of like the idea. If we're banning it, then you have to have a workaround. Like if you go to natural grocers, there's no bag option. You can, you can use boxes, which is, you know, 100%, I mean, it's 100% reused, which I think is great. I went to, um, what Asabi and instead of bags, they give you, now granted, they have like all the, the Chinese food is all in the containers. But they give you a box instead of a bag. I think encouraging things like that that are 100% reused is, is pretty great. Um, the paper bag, I, I defer to the group. I'm not a huge, if we're going to ban, I feel like that would be really changing behavior.
Dick? Dick, I know you'll have a, a comment on the bag part and the fee for that. So go ahead. Maybe you can answer Erin's concern.
I have a, uh, I, I'm in full support of a ban. I agree with everyone. Let's wait. Let's give people time to use up their bags. End of next summer may make sense. Um, I, I am okay with 40% recycled. And I do think, I think there needs to be a ban, but maybe it's just on grocery store type. Um, use. And, and the reason I single that out is. We have trained at least the local regional community to bring bags to the grocery. And I think if we eliminate the fee, it's going to go away and people are just gonna, you know. And people are just gonna, you know, forget their bags all the time and go back to, to, to take, you know, a, a, a paper bag every time. So um, I'm, I'm yes on, on ban. I'm good with 40%. And I say yes on fee, and I think it needs to be more than 10 cents. I, I, not 25 is kind of high, 20, whatever. And um, but only in grocery stores. I, I think you're right, Eric. I think you reach retail and restaurant it, you know, we're not there yet. So I, I think that seems odd to people. Uh, but, but uh, grocery, I think that's pretty common all over the country at this point.
Tim, are you gonna tell us why we can't do any of this?
Uh, yes. A-actually, no, but I wanted the council to be aware, there is the state statute that Jesse's memo mentioned that basically precludes, if you, if you believe what it says, it precludes the ban on, on plastic bags. CML has tried, I believe, for a couple of years to get that statute repealed without success. Um, so I, I'm hearing very clearly the council would like to ban plastic. We will, we will look at it, but I just want to raise the issue on the, the premption.
Thanks, Tim.
Eric?
I'm willing to stick our neck, my neck out, just like I was on the 5G thing. Yeah, go ahead, Jeffrey.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, what I'm talking about is a grocery store. The grocery stores, as far as, you know, I don't, I don't think plastic is, is a bigger, as big an issue on these retail shops on Main Street. Plus, I think most, a lot of them will say, these merchants will say, you know, carrying a bag with, you know, uh, Joe's Five and Dime is good advertisement, and I'm not as concerned about that as I am the, the grocery stores, restaurants and um, and retail. Uh, I'm not, I'm okay with.
You, you can still print on the side of a paper bag.
Yeah, yeah, but I, I just think we start with the grocery stores.
But I'm talking about a bag, a ban, a plastic ban bag, plastic bag ban every, system-wide. Retail, restaurant, lodging, city market, everybody. And then we could talk about the fee and whether we're going to, you know, slice the fee up between grocery and the others.
A decent number of our retail and restaurants have already converted to paper bags. Anyway, they stamp them with their logo.
We thought we were buying a recyclable plastic bag until Jesse told me nobody recycles them, so there you go.
He sent me this text today and I gave him a pros and cons list, so.
A lot of cons and very few pros, so I felt pretty bad the rest of the day.
Sorry.
Couple other questions. Um, so the thicker bag piece will probably not be, does every, how's everybody feel about exemption for produce and meat for safety? Thumbs up, thumbs down?
Yeah, you, yeah, you have to.
And then uh, the restaurants distributing paper takeout and to-go bags with certain percentage? I mean, I think if we're gonna force people to do the 40%, we can then talk later about um, about where we are with a fee for that when we start this then next year. So for now, you're gonna reinstitute the fee that we took away. So that's, it's a dime. Are we, are you planning on raising it or just going back to the dime right now?
Oh, no, I mean, I heard very clearly here that people were not, I mean, I think Dick was the only one so far that was supportive of.
Twelve dollars? Yeah, okay.
And you know what, once we, once the legality gets cleared up, you know, I, I think that, I think there's a, a lot of us would like to talk about plastic bottles as well.
I was gonna bring that up too, Jeffrey. I, I think that's, we need to, we need to discuss the plastic water bottle too thing, sooner than late.
We would clear some shelf space at City Market for some more necessary items.
Oh, and the amount of plastic bottles that come out of city markets is just awful.
And they end up all over the place. Tim?
Um, just want to point out that mechanically, the way we'll reinstate the bag fee is through Rick's, Rick doing an order. Because it was his order that suspended the collection of it. So we'll get that done probably tomorrow, if that's okay with council.
Yep, sounds.
Be great.
And we'll, we'll do some outreach.
Jesse, you have enough to?
Yeah, so I, I did have one more question on the, on the exemption piece. So um, you know, over 100 retailers have provided either um, plastic bags or paper bags that meet a, a size or a thickness requirement. And so there are quite a bit of retailers out there who are providing bags that are not considered, you know, recyclable and under this context, um, but who are not charging the fee. And so my question is, um, and I think, forgive me, somebody mentioned the loophole here. Um, and so my question is just whether you want to leave those exemptions under the administrative rules or if you want to get rid of those in any plastic bag or paper bag until the end of next summer gets charged a fee, and then after which all of those bags need to be paper with 40% recycled content. So do we, do we keep the exemption or do we get rid of it?
The, the only reason I would argue to keep the exemption is some people have paid a lot of money to buy a thicker bag under the premise that they weren't gonna have to charge their, I would personally say, we have one year to redo this, this entire thing.
I agree. I hate the exemption and I want to keep it because I, I don't want to ping anybody right now during COVID.
Yep.
Yeah. And they, and they probably paid a lot for that too.
Dick?
Right.
Great. Give them time and, and eliminate the exemption.
And then um, there's a bit in there about the Aspen bag case, but the last time I brought this discussion to you guys, there was pretty much agreement, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that you guys were supportive in expanding the language to, to match what Aspen had done so that we can use those funds for um, more waste reduction and sustainability-oriented projects.
Yes, yeah.
Everybody good?
Jesse, can we get information out to everyone that we are changing this program so that nobody buys a bunch more bags and then tells us next July, oh, I just bought some bags?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Based on the, the timeline that you guys just provided me, um, we have kind of a draft outreach schedule already, so I'll just need to plug in and work backwards from that. And then Carol had a great um, email question to me earlier today just about um, doing our ad and marketing campaign in Spanish as well. So um, we'll make sure that we're, you know, we're updating all of our communications so that um, it's going out in both English and Spanish, so.
So let's set September 1 of next year for the date.
Hey, hey Jesse, did you see this question? Are there any conversations around the amount of unused phone books at the post office? Um, I don't know if that's in our wheelhouse or not, but that's certainly an annoyance and.
Does anybody?
That's a great question. And um, there's actually, you can, I don't have the website here um, immediately, but you can opt out of phone books online. There's a website, just like junk mail, that theoretically you can, you can opt out of.
Can we push that out on our Town of a Rec Facebook page, please? I think a ton of people would do that if you just knew.
Yeah, I'll work with Haley to do that.
Great, thank you so much.
Yes, Tim, go ahead.
Um, in addition to the amendments that have been discussed here uh, this afternoon, I want to propose some amendments to the ordinance to kind of mirror the court's approved language from the Aspen bag fee case. So when you see the ordinance, um, a lot of what's, because we've already got a draft circulating, a lot of the edits relate to trying to sync up our ordinance with the ordinance that the Supreme Court upheld in the Aspen case. Just a heads up.
Excellent, thank you, Tim. Okay, Jesse?
Thank you guys.
Thank you very much. Well, let's work on the bottle thing next. Thanks, Jesse. Okay, uh, Scott Reed is here for the winter activity enhancements. Sorry, Scott, we cut you down to 20 minutes.
It's all, it's fine. Um, I will abbreviate as, as much as I can. Um, council a few weeks ago asked us, uh, staff to look at uh, winter outdoor recreation enhancements, um, based on the assumption that we will have limited capacity in the ski area for this winter. Um, so we were asked to kind of expand our winter offerings. Um, and town council, in general, guidance was for it to be safe, for it to be outdoors, low-cost, um, close to town, hopefully, really benefiting the novice and family, family uh, users. Um, we have spent some time, both as staff, drawing up uh, some concepts. We solicited input both from SAC, um, but also from the Resiliency Committee, brainstormed and um, kind of drew up the, the range of options that you all see in your memo before you. Um, I won't go through all of those uh, for, in the interest of time, but I do want to let you know that this was kind of um, you know, from the brainstorming session to the presentation that you see before you, uh, staff took a, you know, pretty long look at what it would take budgetarily and operationally to make these happen. So there are definitely some constraints that were considered in there and, you know, the resources that it takes to make these things happen. Um, so hopefully that list of options helps you. Um, in general, the feedback we've received um, from various um, sources really is the low-hanging fruit is where we should be targeting our efforts, uh, utilizing our existing facilities like Gold Run Nordic Center or the ice rink, um, doing some additional grooming of frequency on the, on the rec path is an example of that, where we already groom the rec path. And so maybe we increase the frequency, increase their length, maybe add something on McCain. Those kinds of things sort of tended to rule the day from uh, the, the general public that we've heard. Like I mentioned, Gold Run Nordic Center, increasing fat bike tours, uh, improving, you know, improving the uh, fat bike um, uh, fleet that we have, which we've already kind of committed to this year, um, increasing some staffing for attendance and that kind of stuff, and instructors out there, uh, was some of the, some of the sort of leading ideas, I guess I would say. Um, I won't go, like I said, through all the different options, um, because you all have them before you. Um, but I just would, uh, just mention to you a few kind of key points about some of those. Um, they, as I said, meant, as I mentioned, they do require some resources potentially. So for example, if we plan to work and do some consistent work on the actual town parks, it might be prudent to think about adding another snowcat to our fleet. We currently have two that pretty much function only at Gold Run. So if we were to do some additional grooming that we needed that was outside of what we've currently kind of looked at, um, from a standard grooming standpoint, um, that that may cost uh, some upfront and really help us uh, with our ability to do things um, for the rest of the, rest of the season, um, now that it's snow on the ground. Things that popped up is really uh, transportation, um, and kind of how do we get people out to Gold Run Nordic Center as an example? Uh, that has been an issue in the past and perhaps in, in more of an issue now. We've heard few folks, I think Wendy in particular is really keen on the idea of an adventure bus concept or getting, getting people out there. So that would require some work, obviously, uh, with our um, public works side of things, among other efforts there. Um, and then certainly consistent messaging. We've worked with the BTO and then trying to expand that messaging to make sure um, whatever, whatever we're doing as a whole is really processed and presented to the, to the community and to the visitors in a way that's coherent and um, manageable from them. So we're just seeking your guidance. If this list is helpful, uh, where we want to devote our resources for the coming winter, um, and then staff can take your guys' feedback tonight, we can vet it, find the concepts, we can come up with better uh, cost estimates, and then I'll, and then kind of make some decisions moving ahead. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Thanks, Scott. Rick, you want to chime in before we start?
Yeah, you know, as council's considering this, I just want you to know that, you know, in talking with some of our staff, we have some concerns on the transportation. Uh, I can tell you that James has concerns about missing, uh, mixing any of our transit fleet or rolling stock that has been bought under federal grant programs, uh, and using it outside of its approved uh, transit route, you know, as part of our normal master plan. And, and I will tell you, you know, while I think we do a lot to promote sustainability and mass transportation, it's very challenging right now with the occupancy restrictions and shuttles. And shuttles are expensive to operate and the staffing and, you know, we might go a lot farther by putting money into the amenity versus trying to solve the transportation need um, this winter. And maybe if we look at the amenities and they become popular under a more normal season, we could look at a transportation option in future winters. Uh, but you know, it, to put drivers out there, you're, you know, you're getting a 30, 40, $50,000 range and you know, for, for what's it cost to rent an extra snowcat, uh, Scott, for the year, for the season?
Uh, it's 140 an hour, 200, 200 hours is a minimum rental, so that's in.
Twenty grand?
Yeah, 20, 26 grand.
I, I'm just saying that Scott will tell you he could do a lot of stuff with a third snowcat and, and groom a lot of trails and make a lot of different things happen that, you know, so you might, that might be a direction you want to lead unless you feel really strongly about wanting to try the transportation.
Is there any, is there any way we can seduce uh, uh, like the BGVs, the Beaver Runs, uh, I don't know, Great Divide, or you know, some of these major uh, entities to uh, include shuttles out to Gold Run? I was under the impression that some of them don't leave the town limits.
Well, that, that is it, that's still the town limits out there, but they don't like going that far out because it really impacts their schedule. I, we asked the Resiliency Committee if Beaver Run would send a shuttle out there and they, they said no. I mean, there, it's a, it's a dollar a cents thing right now. I mean, they're, they're hurting for revenue. They've lost 50% of their revenue. They're gonna operate a very minimal shuttle, if any.
Yeah.
Uh, and so it's just not the year, I think, to push that too much, so.
And their shuttles are so small, it would affect so few people.
How, how does everybody feel before we march into the rest of this about the transportation piece? Does everybody agree with Rick that it's not even go down that road?
Yeah.
I was really excited. Yeah, I, I, I really wanted to do the transportation, but I'll, I'll defer to uh, the, the Public Works. And certainly the, the grant issue is, is something I didn't even think of, so. I'll sadly defer.
Great. I think we get better bang for our buck in, in the snowcat, the third snowcat and in the other amenities.
I really like Scott's point about taking advantage of the low-hanging fruit and transportation as much as a.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think it would be, it's a nice to have. Um, and maybe we keep our minds open, maybe something will pop up that would make sense in the future, but right now it, it doesn't sound like low, like low-hanging fruit.
And if the occupancy rules change and we're allowed to staff the, you know, put people full and, and we're seeing a big demand and that, then, you know, one of the things I'm gonna ask you as we go through budget and as we do a lot of things is to be open and be flexible to change. So we'll submit plans based on what we know today. You're gonna, when you look next meeting at your capital plan, you're gonna probably uh, approve one of the lowest capital plans you've done in ages. But that doesn't mean that if we have a better winner or things turn around, that we can, we could do appropriation and add more projects before summer even gets here, right? So we have the ability to change things on the fly if we need to because things are looking better, et cetera.
Has it?
And I, I also.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Has anyone?
Go ahead.
Highland Green Shuttle, since they're so close?
I, I've never asked them what their model is, I don't know.
But you, you know, and also I think, I, I think one of, one of the things maybe in, that we can overcome the deficit of not having a shuttle is just putting out public information. I don't think, you know, when you, you, you think about the Breckridge, you know, the Breckridge Nordic Center on Skeeter Road could be packed. Gold Run is an amazing experience. If, I, I just think some people don't know about it. And if we kind of uh, turned it into a bit of a, a fun, a destination, a fun center-type destination with snowshoeing, maybe ice skating, fat biking, and I, I, I think, I think people will find their way there. But I think we have to spend some energy promoting, uh, promoting this uh, this, this gem.
Well, and plus, we really, you know, one of the latest additions to our, to our recreational plan that Public Works and Scott came up with is, you know, let's still, let's still put the sledding hill on the golf course where it's hard to get people. Let's put the sledding hill on Block 11. We have a perfect mound of dirt up there with the right slope, the right runoff. James assures me that they can, they can shape a wonderful sledding hill. It's, it's on the most widely used uh, you know, bus transit route we have. There's ample parking out there for people to go. Um, I think, you know, that, that, that could probably be a pretty cool little amenity that, that, that we add out there, so.
You know, I think, I think Dennis was a sledding instructor uh, at one time.
I still, I still have my one.
You still sled?
Hey, James, I have a question. Talking about Block 11 as a sledding hill, do you have any idea what it would take to turn that into a tubing facility?
You know, Dennis, I don't know that we really looked at it specifically for a tubing, tubing facility, but um, we could kind of put our heads together and come back if we think that we could turn it into a tubing facility. I'm not really that familiar with what differentiates a. a tubing and sledding area.
Dennis, I can mention that I did speak with Mike Shipley, the new owner of Country Boy Mine, and he is looking very seriously at trying to create an operation on his property, Country Boy Mine for a tubing hill for the season yet. So he is, he's looking hard at that. And we looked at it from a BOSAC standpoint and just kind of a, how functional it would be for some of our own properties and really didn't find a good candidate location for some of the requirements that you have with a rope tow or magic carpet or that kind of thing. So, but I do, I can tell you that, that Country Boy is looking pretty hard at seeing, seeing if they can pull that off this year yet.
Thanks Scott. I, I think that would be a great amenity for the town eventually, even if it's not this season.
Awesome. So Scott, what do you want to do most? Do you want a, a little head nod? Do you have a budget in mind that we can, I mean, is this, you know, is this 25 grand or is this 300 grand? What, where, where, where do you think we could get what we want without, you know, spending too much?
My sense is that it's kind of in order there. If you look at it, I mean, the low hanging fruit out of the Nordic and open space budgets with additional grooming that we can do, that's pretty, that's a pretty easy, low cost one that we can move ahead on. The second one being diversified Gold Run Nordic Center openings. We, you know, the sledding hill out there is an option, but I think as, as Rick pointed out, it's got some challenges to it as well. We can certainly look at getting that pond opening, weather permitting. That was a pretty low cost one, if you will. If we continue there, the, you know, opening the outdoor ice sheet at the, at the current, at the current, at the ice rink itself, I think, you know, that's a pretty low cost one as well. I mean, I would just put a range of, if we can just look at around 110K overall, and then we as staff can, can kind of work and figure that makes sense, you know, how that, how those resources can be applied around. Again, it will take some efforts. You know, the Carter Park sledding hill one is a, is a big one for us. There's some concerns on one hand that as a, on a normal year, it's a tough one to work on. And so do we try really hard to control that this year? Do we kind of wait and see how it happens? Do we staff it? Do we fence it? There's a big range there. So that's a, that's a tougher one for me as far as making a call on that one. And then some of the other ones that we have after that, you can see if, if any of these grab you and really feel like they're high priorities, then we can obviously devote resources to that.
Yeah, go ahead, Dick.
Yeah, I, I, I would think we're going to need to do something with Carter Park because it can get just so dangerous sometimes, but I'll defer to you. The rest of them, I think, look great. Two comments. You know, I think this is the year, we touched on it before, but I really think we need to put a little bit of money into avalanche awareness for, for, you know, and partner with CAIC and, and really try to push out information on avalanche awareness. And then around equity, the equity piece, I, you know, I understand, I keep, I haven't had a chance to look at, look into it, but I hear that Leadville has an equipment library that people can check equipment out, low cost or free. And, and I, I would love to explore communities that, that have that model and maybe making that model work. So that, you know, we can bring a little more equity. Some of these sports and some of these outdoor activities, the equipment costs are so expensive. And if we can help with that barrier or some, I think we broaden the use group tremendously. So I, I, I would love to have, have you guys, if you could, explore that some. Otherwise, great work, Scott. This is awesome.
One quick note on that. We are working with Friends of CAIC already to get some posts in at variable trailheads that we have. They're high, high access trailheads. So we're already getting that rolling. Haley and I are working with, I can't recall his name. I think it's Aaron with Friends of CAIC. So that part is in process and we'll continue to push that message for sure. Thank you.
That's great, Scott. Thanks, Dick. We have about five minutes. Anybody else have something they would like to say to Scott?
I know there was a note at the end about locals and trails and all that. Again, I, I know I've said it before, but just being mindful of, you know, where the information, the welcome center is, is pushing people, where, where, where visitors are being pushed and to make sure that that's spread out where a lot of locals go. And I, I just can't stress it enough since we've seen those numbers on the trail use go up over the summer. It's going to be the same this winter and it could be, it could be maddening. But I think these ideas are, are great. I, I really am hopeful for how this winter will go with, with these types of ideas.
Really? Good.
Hey Eric, I have a question. If, if we're going to try to create a, another, a sledding hill somewhere else, is there a reason to keep Carter Park open?
Probably not. I mean, I don't know. Other than people go there all the time. They're going to go there.
We'd get lynched if we tried to close it.
No, but I, it's minor. You know, the town put a fence up, up higher to, so they weren't going as far, but you could start, we could put another fence up and make it less attractive and more of a, you know, much more of a very novice type hill so that we're not, we're not having some of the safety issues that we, that we currently have. And then, you know, we would have, you know, create this other amenity over off of block 11. So.
It's worth thinking about at least.
Okay, with that, make it more of a Make it more of a family thing. I'm, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'm okay with shortening it, making it less a orthopedic surgeon's dream and make it safer, but I wouldn't close it.
Oh, it used to be awesome though, when you could go from the top. Remember that?
Oh, yeah.
It's still pretty awesome.
Facility was
I would be very sad if it was closed.
You could make it
I'll be sad if it's shortened too.
Yeah. You could make it to the Maggie Pond.
Okay, Scott, does that give you enough? Carol, did you want to add anything?
I just wanted to say that I think the ideas are great. Like was said, go for the low hanging fruit. And I think a lot of that, we have this programming, these activities, and it's really working with our partners, BTO, Rec Create, Rec Heritage Alliance, Maverick Sports, like all those, I think exploring partnerships would really be valuable.
Well done, Scott.
Just one thing, one, what Dick was talking about, like a gear library, I think what, what people really are going to want, our visitors, if, if any of the indication of what I saw out there in this summertime is snowshoes. I think people just want to walk for an hour or so and, and, and consider it good and then go do what they do. So I just hope we have an, and I think those are the, one of the things that are user friendly and readily available.
All right. Scott, great job. Jeffrey told that side that he hates the fairy forest, so don't bring that back. But I love the sculpture garden and the snowman making area. I think we could do something like that in a River Walk.
Yeah.
That'd be a huge winner for families as a, as an activity. If we somehow could really get BCA involved in some sculpture time out there after a snow, a couple of days after would be really, that'd be great. We can have Jeffrey monitor it.
Yeah, yeah.
You could paint him blue like
I'll get Jim Bead to deputize me.
Right?
Jeffrey was a snow, uh, snowman making instructor when he was smaller.
All right. You got two. You need to run to the restroom. You can do it in two minutes. Go. If not, this is not going to be very long. If you're in the public and you are waiting to make a citizen's comment today, the Q and A is at the bottom. This would be a good time to start typing out your Q and A that I will then read as a citizen comment. Please remember that citizens' comments are not for anything that is on as a item for discussion this evening. We'll talk about those things. And we don't have that much stuff. So maybe you have something to say. This would be the time to start typing. And we will call this meeting in order in just a moment. Man, you're good. You know.
Jeffrey, when are you going to be back? When are you coming home? You're muted.
I'm going to get a T-shirt, Dick, that says, "You're muted."
Exactly.
You have a sign that you can hold up.
Yeah, we're going to start heading, heading south pretty soon. Definitely be here for the grants and, you know, well before that. So yeah, depending on the weather.
You know, you're not receiving any of them, right?
Well, I was trying to get something from the Dyslexia Foundation.
Date of that grant meeting, Jeffrey?
22nd.
22nd?
Yep.
Got it. What time?
Uh, it's to be determined, location to be determined, because we were going to probably do it in the conference room, but then you brought up maybe outside somewhere, but we need it. No, we need a TV. We need a computer screen for Peyton to do all the, you know, numbers.
The conference room's fine.
Yeah.
So 20 seconds to be determined, time and place.
Yep.
I got a text during our discussion on the employee appreciation. Said, give her 20 bucks and tell her to stay home.
It's not bad.
All right, here we go. We have three. We got, and there's Dennis. All right. Everybody ready to sprint? I'd like to call to order the town council regular meeting for September 8th. It is 7:00 PM. Roll call, please.
It's Saturday. Here. Mr. Carlton. Mr. Bergeron.
Here.
Ms. Owens.
Here.
Mr. Coon. Mr. Coon, can you unmute?
Yes, I can. I'm right here.
Ms. Jello.
Here.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. All right. We have approval in minutes for council, August 25th, 2020. Anybody have anything to correct? Nope, nope. Minute stand is presented agenda, Rick. We good?
I'm ready.
Excellent. Communications of council, this is the time now to type us some in the Q and A if you have a question or a comment. And since I announced this at the start of the meeting, I'm going to give you a couple of seconds. Let's say 15 seconds and then we're going to move on.
Mayor, I received an email comment, which I just sent to you. If you'd like to read it or I can read it if you'd like.
I will. I'm not going to lie, my email is terrible. Why don't you just read it? It's going to be a week before it shows up.
Okay. This is from Dylan O'Connell and Marissa Johnson. First, I would like to apologize for belittling, belittling remarks I have made in the past towards Mr. Holman and the town council members. I look to represent myself in a professional light moving forward. In all honesty, this project has brought about some traumatic moments for our family as we literally learn of the project that will erect walls outside our front door approximately 60 days. I am adamantly against this project and would like to highlight the following. As it has been raised in the past by Mr. Lamb and Mr. Holman, there seems to be recurring accusations of me, quote, of, quote, me being for affordable housing, just not in my neighborhood, unquote. That's not exactly correct. I have to say, not in my neighborhood appears to be construed with not literally on top of our home. If you think I'm being dramatic, the latest planning commission meeting addressed multiple point violations for absolute setbacks. Reference, we are talking of structures within 10 feet of our home, dining room, front door and the property line. I don't think that so much, quote, not in my neighborhood, unquote, as please not on top of my neighborhood. I hope all involved are well aware that the mobile home park is workforce housing. We are the workforce of Breckenridge. We are what make Breckenridge vibrant, truly local run and helping curating happy repeat guests. The mobile home park collectively has families that have invested in the neighborhood with a, quote, infill lot, unquote, not suited well for dormitories. We are business owners, construction workers, tradespeople, housekeepers, bartenders, property managers, retail workers, librarians, salon workers, the list goes on and on. FYI, trail number one, our home, we purchased from a family of three children, wife and husband, who currently serves our community as a Breck firefighter. Wow. Talk about true blue, true grit Breckenridge. It feels like this project or experiment, as it has been explained to us, is cramming poor people on top of poor people based on proximity. It also stings a bit that it's designed, packaged and sold to the council by a firm whose day to day is on Pearl Street. Britten Gray Partners doesn't reside in my neighborhood. They're not the landlord or fellow homeowners we see every day. They're a for-profit design firm. Our neighborhood is a visual on their screens? Why would we accept falsehoods from people who we've never met? Furthermore, this isn't a utilization of an infill lot. It's a project inspired and solidified off trendy verbiage such as, quote, mountain minimalism, everything one needs and nothing they don't, unquote. It's a project piggybacking off trends we see in metropolitan areas just like Denver. Listen back to the planning commission boast of the creativity, merit and design of this project with rationale that 254 square feet is, quote, "A lot worse than in my day," unquote. None of that is relevant, you guys. Base decisions off reality. It's one-third acre site hugging existing homes. I'm sorry to say, you're not listening to your own community members. It seems ignorant, abrasive and risky. You are truly gambling on Breckenridge's present, our lives, for a, quote, "Future Breckenridge class," unquote, looking for dormitories. Continuing on, the other overwhelming unfounded theme we've heard is, quote, "Well, there's a group of people that want this," unquote. I'll tell you, there's also a whole group of people that you don't want this. We feel conveniently left out of the surveys. We don't want this taking away our quality of life, pure and simple. What if your vision doesn't match reality? What if three to four trailer families decide, ouch, quote, "No voice, no more peace at home. It's not worth the battle anymore," unquote, that would literally erase gains of 14 workforce units pound for pound. There are a whole bunch of important people in my neighborhood that may not want this project infringing upon their hard-earned equity. Again, it's not, not in my back, excuse me, not, not in my neighborhood. It's respect our neighborhood, please. I have also been told, quote, "Well, Dylan, it's already a densely populated area. It's the perfect build site," unquote. That has many holes. When and if a 1.6 million micro studio, studio experiment pans out, are we going to build again on top of other existing neighborhoods? What precedent is there being set here? Look out well into neighborhood. Think of the inherent risk involved with this logic of telling community workforce families, council knows best. Please pipe down as we decide your future and fate. You have no say. As I'm hoping you've considered, in this cost-benefit analysis, you are literally cramming people into one-third of an acre site, dormitories, on top of longstanding community, far outside perspectives. It appears hurried, precarious and bullish. Okay, in all fairness, Dylan, what if this project takes off? What if I end up with the egg on the face? Well, it's, let's start building micro studios as fast as possible. The only issue here is, with this site, you can't build and expand buildings, three to 10. You're stuck with the one-off, a veil desaire, in parentheses. They said it not, they said it not me, or by the way, or a Breck terrorist micro, quote, "The experiment," unquote. So best case, it works and we have 14 standalone micro units. Now having to build phase two where? Down Airport Road? Wouldn't it maybe wise to build the experimental where you can constantly expand and improve off of, should it prove itself? Again, an unnecessary and ill-advised gamble I'm seeing here. This project on a highly debated and contested morsel of land could have consequences that force existing members of the Breckenridge workforce to reconsider their commitment to a town that has let them down, squash their hope and silence their accomplishments. Finally, I will stand by. I believe this council is being sold a trend. Micro studios that aren't solving our crisis and creating more head Micro studios that aren't solving our crisis and creating more headaches and solutions. A square peg, round hole, maybe. Maybe I'm wrong, but unfortunately, I'm not, I'm just not willing to sacrifice or gamble our home for this experiment. You may have our best intentions at heart, but I have to say, it certainly doesn't feel that way. It feels as if we have no voice in our community. A community that, a community we have obviously invested in. A community has given us so much and also required a steep payment of dues. We hope to be a future class of Breckenridge, but it pains us to see you risk it all on an unknown future. Thank you. And I'll send this to Helen and out to you guys in a hard copy.
Very good. Thanks, Shannon. And Dylan and Melissa, thanks for the change of tone. It makes a huge difference. I truly appreciate it. And hopefully you listened to some of the comments earlier today and what the council's looking for. So thank you very much. We move on to, any other comments come in? Nope. All right. Breckenridge Tourism Office update. Do we have one? Tim Berry doesn't work for the BTO. I know that for a fact.
No.
There's Lucy. Oh, there was Lucy.
Ah.
Hi, Lucy.
Sorry, sorry about that, guys. I'm probably a little too remote for, for my own good here. I'm trying to think of a good segue from, from the citizens' comments. But I'll start with Labor Day. We have our most recent lodging review, August 31st, so we don't have final numbers for the Labor Day weekend. But everything we're seeing looks like it will happen a better weekend than it was in 2019. Sunday night was already ahead of last year, and with all the last-minute bookings, we probably beat last year. For the whole summer so far, we're down 23% in room nights. Most of that loss, again, was in June, early, pre-4th of July. August, we were only down 6%, which is really pretty remarkable, I think. September is still early, looking at 21% down at this point. Your numbers, we're getting in, but it's still a bit too early to tell. It's too early to be meaningful on that. So any questions on lodging or bookings? I think it's been enough to keep people going, but not enough to get scared. Okay, we're working on the fall activations, art history. I think you're all aware, seventeen restaurants that will be doing kind of Bavarian food and German beer or wine pairings. I know they're already getting reservations. Steins are for sale. We're planning out Uller and snow sculpture. What we're gonna do with Uller, no parade, obviously, but we're gonna look at five or six locations for common installations. Potentially use those same locations for snow sculptures when we get around to doing snow sculptures. Trying to figure out how we can put those around town. So there's a ton of work going on that. Community update is this Thursday at 9:30. And let's see, what else? Oh, to Dick, to your point earlier about the CAIC in the, in the winter kind of code of conduct, the Colorado Tourism Office is working with Colorado Ski, Colorado Ski Country USA. And we are working on a winter code of conduct, and it will be part of the Colorado Cares videos that the CTO puts out. Those will be things that we'll have on our site as well. We can modify it specifically for Breck. But that is something we'll push, like to all the properties and everything, so we really get that word out. Because we're, we're very concerned about just people being smart and knowing, knowing what to do for that country this winter. Last thing I'll just put out there is the latest traveler sentiment surveys. Where they're improving very slightly. We're up to just under 50% of the traveling population feels confident to travel now. Forty-eight percent are confident to go out to rest, a local restaurant or shopping. So we've been stable, not expecting that it's really gonna move back into normal. Yeah, so, and then the last thing I'll say is, we had a writer in Forbes magazine, a stranger from Forbes, and he published a very nice story on Breckenridge, if you can see it on Forbes.com. But the title of it was, "This may be, this may well be the safest and dog-friendlyest destination." So check that out if you haven't seen it yet. No questions?
That's a great article, Lucy.
Yeah, he, he had a, he had a great time, and we are, do, we have a new policy now when writers come in that we're not hosting, we're not face, you know, Austin's not face-to-face hosting, so we give them the itinerary, and they go do it themselves, and he, obviously that worked really well in this.
Questions for Lucy about anything? Anybody? Anybody? All right. Lucy, thank you so much.
No.
Okay, we got one piece of continued business tonight. That is the second reading, Council Bill Number 33, Series 2020. This ordinance approving a lease with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, Delaware Limited Liability Company, the Town of Breckenridge Welcome Center at 203 South Main Street. Tim?
This ordinance comes on for second reading. If approved, it will authorize, it will approve a long-term lease with an affiliate of AT&amp;T and will authorize them to place a small cell facility on the roof of the town's Welcome Center building. There are no changes to this ordinance from first reading.
Thank you, Tim. Questions for Tim?
You broke up a little bit. This is 33 first reading? I mean, second reading?
Second reading, number 33, Jeffrey.
That is correct. Yeah, second reading. Yes. Okay.
That's a yes. Any other questions?
Yes.
Anyone in the public wish to comment on the second reading of this town ordinance? You have thirty seconds to type a question into the Q and A at the bottom of your screen, starting now. Who's got a radio on in their background?
It's not me.
I can hear it, so you know.
What's this sound like?
Sounds like a radio. Sounds like somebody talking.
Talking, TV, radio, something.
Yeah, maybe it's TV. All right, that's it for public comment. There are no public comments. Is there a motion? Yeah, you're muted.
Needs a sign, Eric.
I don't know what I did with it. I put it down. There you go, Jeffrey. Do it again.
I move, we pass this, I move, we pass a second reading. Council Bill Number 33, Series 2020, the title which has been written into the record.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Helen?
Ms. Giallo.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Ms. Saturday.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have no first readings and no resolutions this evening. We do have planning commission decisions for the 1st of September. Are there any call-ups this evening? Seeing none of the planning commission decisions stand as presented, report of the town manager. All right, Rick, buckle in. Here we go.
I got lots of stuff, so. We'd like to reschedule them. You're getting your pictures taken with masks on for this Friday. How many of you could make that work? And we'll try to come up with a time. Maybe, yeah, we'll let you know, Eric. I know, maybe, yeah. All right, because the person leaves out of town on Saturday, so we don't have a lot of choice. I'm gonna be out of town starting Friday, and I'll be working remotely next week. So I'll be taking some vacation and doing some work. And Shannon will be acting town manager here in my absence, just so you know. You guys, we sent you a copy of the ballot question and information that the county is looking to put on this November. Basically, it's a de-Gallagherization here in Southern County. It lines up with about twenty other counties that are doing it this year. CMC did it, I believe. Was it last year? And the Fire District did it. You have the ability, if you want to pass a resolution, to support that ballot question. So do you understand enough about it? If you don't, Eric can give you a tutorial on the Gallagher issue. And.
Shannon, did you send that out to everybody, that video?
I did. If folks had a chance to open the update from today, there was a little five-minute video from Build a Better Colorado that gave a little explanation of Gallagher and the issues around Gallagher and how it interacts with Tabor.
It's really good. It really explains the, the whole, why it's such a mess.
Some of you may be on different committees where they come out and somebody from the county has talked to you about where they would probably have to cut 17% out of some of the different programs that they fund countywide, the different tax initiatives, Safety First, and all of those that have passed, it will be a loss of revenue. So if you want to take some time and look at the issue before you make a decision, we can, you know, we can wait till next meeting, or you could just let me know, and if the majority of you wanna support it, we'll get a resolution drafted. Unless you go now.
Does the language of that, of that bill mirror other counties? Is that what you said? Okay.
Yes.
Because I've got.
Starts off without increasing taxes, right? Because they're not gonna increase your taxes, but your taxes won't go down.
I've got an input, people are crazy about the language, but if it mirrors the other counties, that makes sense. I'm in absolute favor of supporting this. I, this is what's so broken with our state constitution. But I'm just one vote.
Out of the rest.
I'm with you.
I am as well.
I apologize. I haven't read it yet, so.
Well, we got four, so you want me to bring it back, Eric?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and bring it back? In the meantime, everybody watch the video. It definitely, I mean, it raises some questions, and I, there is, the broader issue of de-Gallagherization makes complete sense. There are some bigger questions, though, about what's the true percentage loss? Because as, as Gallagher affects it sort of on a downward slide, the increase, not only in the number of homes here, but the increase in valuation, takes it up the other way. So everybody watch the video. Make sure that, that you know exactly what we're voting on the next time. Let's get a resolution prepared, and then we can have a little bit more discussion on it, if we want. If not, we just pass it, so.
Eric, I, I appreciate your comments. I, what it does to commercial real estate affects our local businesses in such a big way, whether they own or rent.
There is no change on this to commercial, because commercial always stays at 29%. So there's no change.
But it won't keep driving them up, though, because.
It doesn't. You say 9% for commercial, no matter what. This only affects residential, because residential is the only piece that gets affected by that. If you back it up, there's a 45-55 split between commercial and, and residential, 45 residential, 55% commercial. That's what generally drives that thing down. The 29% for commercial stays in effect no matter what. That's what you multiply your, your actual value to get your assessed value. On the, on the residential side, though, that goes down to maintain that, maintain that thing. But the, the video does a great job explaining and explaining why 2013, when it should have gone to 9% for residential, it didn't. And that sort of screwed things also. So anyway.
Yeah, four votes. I'll talk to you about it offline.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so Tim, if you could prepare a resolution.
Be happy to do that. I also want to point out that on the statewide November, November ballot, there is a proposal to repeal Gallagher.
That, that would be fantastic to do it at the state level, would be outstanding. Is there any chance of it passing?
Flimmin'. Doesn't think so.
All right. Moving on, Jim Lamb, Jim Lamb tendered his resignation from the planning commission. He was due to come off at the end of, in October. He only had like four more meetings anyway, so. But it was effective immediately, so we're gonna wait to fill that at the same time that we fill the other two in October. So there'll be three seats up in October, just so you know. The mandatory mask zone, do we want to keep that in, in effect in that downtown area even after we open up Main Street? If so, we're gonna put, build a little better metal signs, and we'll go through the winter in there. Do not forget your training in the morning, everybody, eight o'clock. Be there, ready to go. And the last thing I will tell you is that ComDev was reached, contacted by the architectural company for City Market. And they're kind of brushing the dust off of the plans and reassessing what the fees would be for the expansion, et cetera. And they were asking questions about, obviously, the development agreement that we, that expired and that we took off the table. And so, you know, who knows where they're at? I think it's good news that there's conversation going on there, but we don't know is any progress they've made with Dick Bowder. So my recommendation to you is that we don't consider any type of development agreement for this again, until we know at such time that they've actually entered into an agreement to proceed between Dick and City Market, so.
So what Rick is saying is, do not get your hopes up.
That's all I have.
All right. All right. Our report of the mayor and council members, I have two things. We had a MMC meeting. Talked a lot about, Dr. Smith was there from the school district, talked about, you know, school and opening and, and what's been going on so far. That was last week. You know, we're into the second week now, and things seem to be proceeding. I also had the opportunity to have a face-to-face with Rick and myself. Met with Michael Bennett and Jonah Goose, as well as Brianna Snow from FERC, and Amy Winland was there from Public Health. And Elizabeth Lawrence, plus Josh Blanchard and Tamara Pogue, potential commissioners. Northwest COG was there. So there was 10 or 12 of us total. Got to sit around in a circle and, and talk to Senator Bennett and Congressman DeGoose. It was fantastic. Great questions from everybody. Rick and I had the opportunity for about fifteen minutes before it started, Bennett showed up a little early, and we walked down to Main Street with him, showed him what we were doing, talked about what we felt was a need for more federal funding to help us in case we do need another round of rent. It was, it was pretty awesome. I did not know this at the start, but I ended up being the host of the event, so I had to give some opening remarks, and then sort of corral everybody, did not talk too long. But it was, it was, you know what, he, they are both, we are so lucky to have DeGoose and to have Bennett representing us in Washington DC. It is really cool that they're there for us. So everybody that asked questions did a great job. One thing that DeGoose said at the very end that I, I really, it was a big takeaway for me was that this is the last, that we were the last stop on their tour. He said it was amazing how everybody in the county that was represented was heading in the same direction. And they were all doing the same things and agreed, in particular in, in the pandemic, with, with how we react with our citizens and the things we're doing to keep everybody safe. They were really very psyched and, on how we as a community and the Greater Summit community was handling everything. So that was. So, that was great to hear. So, that's what I have. Done some other stuff, too, but I'm gonna stop there. Erin, open space.
We did not have a meeting since the special meeting that we had where we discussed all those options that we discussed. But this Saturday, we are doing a distant trail. You know, COVID distance. We'll all be on the same trail, but.
Tourism, Mr. Coon.
Yeah, for the BHA, the meeting, our board meeting is tomorrow, actually, from 12 to 1:30. But from an operations point of view, Cindy Inchman has resigned and has moved to Denver. So, Larissa's gonna take a hard look whether, how she wants to handle that position going forward. The most popular summer attraction, for those of you that didn't know, but were waiting to hear, was gold panning, which was up 50% year-over-year, or since 2019, rather. And then Sally Barber Mine is scheduled, two projects in tandem. One is to do the emergency repairs on it this fall, followed up by repairs for it permanently. But we're looking at a couple of different ideas there. Banner sign possibly up there with a GoFundMe page, looking for ways for tourists to help out with the funding of the restoration of Sally Barber Mine.
That's great. It needs it. Yeah, that's what makes it.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you, Dennis. Creative arts. Who's on creative anymore? Nick? Go ahead, man.
Kelly and I are in the process of onboarding and learning a lot. We did a session with the Finance Committee today and asked for a little more detail. And we are gonna meet, I believe, Thursday for a couple of hours with Matt and dive in with a little more detail to their finances, as well as their proposed budget that they're gonna send to Rick in the near future. I think I reported on the other, the full meeting at our last council meeting. So, that's kind of where we're at. But in the next couple of weeks, Kelly and I are both, we've got a number of meetings with them in an effort to really get up to speed in that organization. So, I look forward to it. The more the meetings, the more I see opportunity to participate, which is great.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Kelly, anything to add?
Nope, Dick covered it.
Okay. Tell them the purse strings are tight when they start talking about funds.
We've told them a lot.
A little heads up. Hey, Dick, you wanna keep going? Anything to add? Dick, anything to add with events?
Events, no, you know, I just really stress.
Five minutes.
That there's been a lot of thoughtful work by that group in not necessarily doing events that drive people here, or really not doing events that are driving crowds, but to really focus on wow and delight the people that are here. You know, that's kind of been the mantra for events this summer is just to really enhance the brand or enhance the experience of those that are here and not necessarily, well, not at all really have events that drive crowds. So, and I think that group's really collectively put in some great work in those efforts.
Excellent. Thank you, Dick. Childcare, Kelly.
We haven't had a meeting. We've had lots of reports, so.
Workforce Housing Committee, anything to add, Mr. Carlton? No? All right. And Social Equity Advisory Committee, Erin, other than tomorrow's meeting?
We had another meeting with, Dick and I had another meeting with Monica to discuss the Social Equity Commission and how to go about that. An idea was brought up to do a listening session, or at least one listening session, if not a couple. So, and Monica's going to put together more information about what that would look like. And Dick, what else did we talk about? Oh, we talked about what goes into recruiting members and what type of criteria to look at.
Interestingly, I think she felt a mix of, you know, folks that have firsthand experience and have walked in the shoes and advocates, you know, and people that have experienced navigating their way through the community and advocating. So, I, you know, that was taking us in a little different direction than we, I think, initially started. So, that was an interesting, but more to come on that. You know, we were just getting started in that process.
Excellent. Okay. So, final thing on this that I'd like to discuss is what are we gonna do with Carol?
Thanks, man.
We need to find, potentially, something, a committee for her to be on. So, we can do this offline, too. If any of you are interested in unloading something, email me and then I'll get with Carol and we'll sort of find out what her passion is and then get her, you know, slowly up to speed and on one of these committees. So, sound fair enough? All right. Other matters? Anyone other than Jeffrey, who has gone dark on us?
And Eric, just for, you know, the county is doing that second town hall meeting for elected officials this Thursday at 1:00 and they're really hoping to get more town council members participating in that meeting. So, hopefully, some of you have it on your calendar for Thursday at 1:00.
And so, it's like town hall style? I mean, I don't think I replied that I'm going, but I am going. Do I need to reply?
I think to get a panelist invite so that you have your own login and they can see you.
And that's what they want, it sounds like. Okay. I'll go ahead and reply.
Do we need to be seen, apparently?
Well, if you have questions, you need to be heard.
Yeah, and it's not a community, you know, they really, I think, wanted electeds to have an somewhat interactive conversation with them.
Oh. Will do.
Last time, it was a lot of presentation, but yeah, I think they'd like to know you're there.
Hey. Thank you.
I'm not gonna.
Where'd that invite have come from? I've got so many emails and invites. I'm trying to find it.
I'll have Peyton resend everything out to you, okay? She's probably listening, so.
Any other matters? Anyone? Erin?
I know I brought this up a couple of meetings ago and I talked to Eric about it. I just wanted to bring up mental health again for this winter and that's, we we should be prepared to talk about it. I know that we talked about, you know, checking on your neighbor and things like that. I'm also curious, we don't need to talk about it now, but you know, what efforts are out there? I know that Building Hope is working on it, but if we could, you know, maybe hear from them or coordinate our efforts, I think it will be an unseen issue coming up this winter. And I know that we've, you know, we've seen some things happen and I'm a bit concerned about what's going to happen when everybody has to be inside. They can no longer do social distance happy hours and things like that. I'd love to see more, some strategy. I love the check on your neighbor message. I think we should continue with that, but just keep the conversation going about what we're doing about mental health as we enter into this uncharted territory of winter. In our climate with COVID, I think it could be very tumultuous. I just, I worry about it. So, just bringing it up.
Yeah, fair enough, Erin. I don't think you can stress it enough, actually. This is gonna be a, it's gonna be a hard winter. So, you know, hopefully, we're gonna get some more guidance from CDPHE in the next, you know, hopefully, a couple of weeks with that new dial that they have and we can see a little more opening, but you know, then we gotta see what Summit Public Health wants to do. And you're right, you know, not everybody likes to be outside in the, on those cold days. So, I think the checking on your neighbor is a great message that we as a council can push out. But we need to make sure that Building Hope has the tools that they need to assist when they need to, so.
And I think we're so great about talking about businesses and, you know, helping with rents and helping with other things. I just, if somehow. Or is what kind of strategy we'll have for our community to, one way or another.
Yeah, fair enough. Other matters? Speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay. That's all we got for tonight, everyone. Thank you for your attention. I will see you all in the morning for equity training and have a good night. We are adjourned.
Thank you. Have a good day.